Yeah, or yeah, they do a good job.
Not that I know of.
I think you saw it.
Did you?
Yeah.
Maybe I just...
I didn't, did you get this in the mail? I didn't get, I didn't check my mail. I didn't check my mail.
Yeah, I got that, yeah. Yeah.
Maybe they probably didn't send it out. No, so you... I don't know, we don't have either one. This was sent to me. Same thing, maybe it was revised, had revised. Yeah. So I guess either it changes. Do you want me to take a look at this stuff? You know, I never check my mail. It's bad. What are they? Yeah, yeah, it was... But the design is the same.
That's why I think it was going to take a whole lot of time with this stuff. You know, I mean, you've already been through...
Yeah.
A lot of approvals already, okay. Okay.
My microphone working? Yes?
Now it is.
Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2019 Agenda Resolution of the Regularly Scheduled Meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board of the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 7th day of December 2018. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 14, 2018 edition of the Princeton Packet. Could you call the roll, please?
Ms. Capizole? Mr. Cohen?
Yeah.
Mr. Oakman?
Here.
Mr. Quinn?
Here.
Ms. Sax?
Here.
Mr. Stankewitz?
Here.
Mr. Texarney?
Here.
Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Mrs. Gunning?
Here.
Mr. McGowan?
Here.
Ms. Spall?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there, does anyone have any announcements? Anything for the next week or so? All right, if there are no announcements, you've had two sets of minutes. The first one was the regular meeting of July 12, 2018. Any additions, corrections? Has anyone turned in any corrections for these? If not, could I hear a motion to accept them?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I think I have to abstain, since I wasn't part of the...
Okay. We... Right, those who were not present at the meeting will not be listed as voting for it. The second set of minutes were the regular meeting of March 15, 2018. Any additions, corrections on those? Anyone? I gather you must all be turning your corrections in ahead of time. Which is a very good idea. All right, could I have a motion for these, please?
I'll make the... Sorry.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carry.
And they, oh, okay. Again, I have to abstain.
Okay, those who were not present will not be listed as voting. That brings us to the resolutions that are on the agenda for this evening. First one is a professional services agreement. This is Miller, Porter, and Mueller. And it's for litigation on the Old Orchard Village Homeowners Association versus 900 Harrington Princeton LLC. Amount not to exceed 27,500. Does anyone have any comments on this? Questions? Anyone?
I'm just curious, this isn't really about the fees, but did the developer get the tax credits to proceed with the project?
It's been determined.
Has it been determined? Okay. Just curious.
Okay. Any, any other questions about this? I don't need to read this whole thing, do I? All right. Would someone like to move this?
Move approval.
Okay, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed?
Madam Chair, if I could, if we could go back to announcements, I was, wasn't quick enough to call up this announcement, but I'm very happy to announce that the Neighborhood Character and Zoning Initiative is getting back together again and will be meeting on November 14 at 10:00 a.m. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Catronio. And I believe that Ms. Sax and Mr. Cohen will be joining myself and the Chair along with Michael. So this has been, was put on pause for a little while, and I'm pleased to see that it's resuming. Part two. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, let me see. We also have the annual calendar for both the planning board and I guess it's, and the site plan board. You've all had a chance to look this over, and you can see that the dates are all Thursdays, and that there are more of them than usual, but that's the way it's been going for the planning board. So if there's no strange error in this, would someone like to move the calendar for next year?
So moved.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. I thought for a moment we were going to all sit there and just contemplate the calendar. Thank you very much. All right. All those in favor of the calendars for next year?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Carry. Great. And that brings us to the discussion for this evening. These are referrals from ZARC and...
And Madam Chair, I'll recuse myself for this discussion and come back afterwards.
All right, thank you. Anyone else recusing themselves? No? Okay. So these are a number of referrals. The first is checklist amendments, minor subdivision, community impact statement. The second is the public school zone change. And you should have additional information provided to the board members at your place. And the last one will be the discussion of the projecting signs. Michael, if I can ask you to walk us through this?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of the public. ZARC, our zoning amendment review committee, has been very busy lately, and we've got, as you can see, several recommendations before the board this evening. I don't know if the chairman, if our chairman of the committee, Mr. Oakman, wants to say anything at the outset, or maybe as we go through it.
Jeffrey?
No, just thanks to everybody who's really put in, put in a lot of time and effort on the, the committee, the town staff, and also the members of the public, and the emergence association. Thank you, everybody, and please, please proceed, Michael, thanks.
Okay. Thank you. The first item is checklist amendments regarding, it's regarding review of minor subdivisions. As you all well know, as minor subdivision applications have come before the board, there's been concern and interest on the part of the public, as well as members of the board, to have more information regarding site features, both natural and what's proposed in terms of architecture. And what's being proposed here today would be to, for minor subdivisions, to have applicants submit more information on the actual structures that are going to be built on the site, including floor plans, building elevations, and also, very importantly, more environmental information about the site. So if, I'm sorry, that, thank you, I got a little ahead of myself. If a variance is required, as if it's not a straightforward subdivision with no variances, that would, that would go as a matter of right, but if there's a variance, as we've seen a couple of these recently, the, we feel that it's justified to ask for additional information in order to argue that the variance is justified. So this information about both what's proposed to be built, as well as features of the site, including the site grading, storm, stormwater management for the site, utilities, and also existing trees, large trees to be removed, these are all questions that have come up, I know recently, since I've been in Princeton, for minor subdivisions that have required variances. And this would give you the authorization to be able to ask for that information at the outset, and so that staff can evaluate more information as we write up our memos and report back to the board. So that's, that's the first item before you. I don't know how you want to take this, or you want me to sort of walk through all of them?
Maybe we should have questions on each one as they come up.
Okay.
So are there questions on the minor site subdivision? Anyone?
Just a point of clarification. And I may be just missing it, but this, what we have in front of us and what we were sent beforehand refuse, refers to preliminary major subdivision checklist at the top, 10B15158, preliminary major subdivision checklist.
That's a separate item. It's next on the agenda.
Oh, it's the next item. Sorry. My mistake, thanks.
I'll just comment, I'm really happy that this change is being made. I've been asking for this information when these applications have come in, and I think it'll be a lot smoother and more predictable for the applicants to know right up front that this is, you know, we're looking for these pieces of information to evaluate the positive and negative criteria for the variances.
It's really, it's really much more fair to the board members in particular, because if you're being asked away a variance, you need even more information.
Anybody else have anything on the, the minor subdivisions? Do you want to, shall, shall we vote on each one of these and then move along, rather than testing them? So, does somebody want to move approval of the minor subdivision?
I'll move approval.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I'll second.
Any further comments? Do you want to just read the roll on that so we're clear?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Spall? Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. And we, we will be forwarding that on. Now, now, maybe you'll do the community impact statements of the major subdivision?
The second proposal is to require or request, as part of the submission for a site plan application, to have a community impact statement submitted, and it would provide us with information that many stakeholders in the community have been looking for in terms of impact of development on various aspects of life in Princeton, whether it's public services, utilities, just all kinds of impacts, school system. And what this would be used for is, it would not be used for, in any way for you to weigh whether to approve or deny an application, because that really wouldn't be appropriate under municipal land use law. It would be used for master planning purposes. So this information would be shared with all of the committees and the board as it works on the master planning, which we'll be doing a lot of in the next couple of years, as well as other agencies, such as the Board of Education and other government entities in Princeton, that need this information to do their planning and due diligence. So the idea is to have information about the scale of development and what kind of economic and traffic, all kinds of things that are generated by proposed development. We think this will be an important tool, because right now, we're just, we're always asked, what's going to be the impact of this or that project, and we don't have good answers sometimes, so hopefully this information will really help us do better planning.
If I could just add to that, and it's for subdivisions as well as site plans, but it's, it's certainly not going to go to the board, these are not matters, as Michael indicated, that are subject to board review, but they, getting such data is going to be very useful for master planning purposes, and for, and for the agencies who would like to see that included.
Yeah, I think it's very important to make that clear, because it would be very unfair to applicants for you to use this information to decide whether an application should be approved or denied, when you're supposed to be using the appropriate points under the municipal land use law, and whether it's appropriate land use or not. This is different. This is for us to plan where we're going moving forward, and to do all the other considerations we need to do in terms of services that the community needs to provide, so it's a planning tool.
Excuse me, Mrs. Gunning. Before the board members this evening, there's an amendment to that language, it's highlighted in yellow. Mr. Mueller can elaborate on that, but he had requested a few modifications, and when you vote on this, this item, this is the document that we'll be referring. Thanks.
Jerry, do you have that? Do you want to highlight your changes?
Yeah, just, just two. The first one, which is in LA, and basically, what's on the first page is repeated, which is the major subdivision checklist, is repeated verbatim for the major site plan checklist. But the first is, you can see, because it's highlighted, changed municipal agencies, that the data is going to be circulated to governmental agencies, because municipal agencies would not include the Board of Education, for example, and there might be other ones as well, such as the Sewage Authority. So I just wanted to have the language a little broader in terms of who, what, what entities would get this data for their own use. And the second one is, as I thought about this some more, what we wanted to make sure was that when the submissions were made, it was very particularized for Princeton, and they, and the applicant simply didn't use, you know, generic studies from Rutgers, for example, for, with respect to schools, for example, which are, which really isn't terribly useful. It might be that, that more generic studies, that is, broad-based studies, will be useful in certain circumstances, and the applicant, when making the submission, could explain why that was used. But we wanted to avoid that, if we can, to get, to get richer, more, more fine-tuned data.
So, any questions or comments?
I, I just wanted to add one thing, which was, you know, is having been a developer and come before planning boards myself in the past, I, I wanted to put on the record that there was a lot of discussion in ZARC about how do we get this information without making it too onerous on the applicant, especially because it's not part of the MLUL, you know, criteria to, to, to review. And in fact, many of our neighboring townships ask for more information than we are asking for. We pared back some of what we found as some comps around the area. So I just wanted to put out there that I think that this is a fair set of requests, and something that is really geared towards letting us and the school board and the local agencies do the planning they need without, without, you know, disrupting people's ability to apply.
Anyone, anyone else?
Madam Chair? Just want to thank Michael and Jeffrey for their leadership on this. It was a great discussion at ZARC. Some of, some, some on the board might remember the Landwin 2 application, which preceded the Landwin 1 application in terms of approval. That applicant chose to include what they called an economic impact statement, which was sort of, got the idea rolling, I think, on, on our end. And I think that the other entities in town will be grateful that we're making this step.
Right. And this is one of the preliminary steps to having a much better facilities element of the master plan, which has been a weakness for us for a long time. Anything else? Anyone?
I will happily move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. There's no further discussion. Do you want to call the roll on that?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Mr. Spall? Motion carried.
Thank you. And now, let's go on to projecting signs, which is a...
No, no, public schools.
We have yet another.
We have public schools.
Ah, that's, we go to the schools next? Okay.
Right. The next amendment that's before you for consideration regards the classification for public schools. Right now, schools are conditional use in zones in the township, in all the zones of the former township, and so, and many of the residential, I guess most of the residential zones in the former borough. And what that does is it requires the public school system to come in and do a formal application and spend the money to make the application, then a conditional use, of course, they have proofs to meet in terms of meeting the conditions of the code. It's, it's a pretty drawn-out process, and in, as you may know, some of you who worked, have worked elsewhere in New Jersey, a lot of communities, schools are permitted uses in, in many zones. That's a pretty common thing. So what this is proposing is to make public schools a permitted use in the zones, in all zones. And that's pretty much the difference between, it wouldn't be a conditional use anymore, and...
Okay.
Right, and I'm sorry, as, as you also may know, that, well, you would still see proposals for school projects as a courtesy review, so you'd have an opportunity to review the plans, make recommendations, but it would not be a condition, a formal conditional use application. We feel this is appropriate, and it's less of a burden on our public schools in terms of expense and time, because a lot of times their projects are time-sensitive in terms of trying to get bids out and projects moving.
Okay. Any comments? Anyone? Questions?
I have a question. Why would this, why would, the way it is now?
I don't have the history of it, Madam Chair.
About 1991, particularly Borough Council got very concerned that schools might move into areas that would drive residential out, or commercial out, and so on, and they wanted to sort of make it, to make the process a little more burdensome, and so they added conditional use. Before, before that point, it was just pretty much what we're proposing tonight, so, and it was, you know, it differed from the borough and the township and so on, but that was, that was really the point where conditional use review came in, and all these expenses for schools. Although, I mean... Derek, do you disagree?
I just, for a point of clarification, my understanding is that we, despite the fact that there were conditional uses, that we were not reviewing public school projects in recent years as conditional uses, they were just proceeding. So we're really ratifying the practice over the recent couple of decades by making this change, not, we're not making a change.
And I, I would add that in addition to the courtesy review, which will still take place, we're going to do a lot of front-end planning hand-in-hand with the Board of Education moving forward, as we update our facilities element of the master plan, and, and do some of that other kind of master plan work. So I think we'll have a better idea of what's coming down the pike in terms of changes to facilities, new facilities, and I think that'll complement the courtesy review process that I'll have, we'll have moving forward.
Okay. Any, anyone else? Anything else? All right. There are no further comments? Would someone like to move this one?
I'll move approval.
Okay. It's been moved by Mr. Quinn. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further comments? Anyone?
Do you want to call the roll on that one?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sax?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Spall? Motion carried.
Thank you. Now, we'll, we'll do projecting signs.
Thank you. This is an exciting, I, I think it's a very exciting proposal you have before you, because it involves so many topics that this board takes on, and is concerned about urban design, historic preservation, and economic development. We got a request, the, I'm sorry, the municipality received a request from the Princeton Merchants' Association through the Mayor's Economic Development Committee, and then it was forwarded to the planning board, to consider a new type of sign to be permitted in, primarily in the central business district, the Nassau Street corridor and Witherspoon Street corridors. And this would be projecting, or what's sometimes are called blade signs. They're signs that stand out from the front facade of a building. Traditionally, centuries ago, they were a pretty popular type of signage. In the 20th century, they became more restricted, but now a lot of towns are considering them. Some towns, several towns in New Jersey have recently enacted ordinances to allow projecting signs. And what you have before you is a proposal that I'm very proud of, because two entities that cared very much about the subject, the merchants, primarily of the, of the business district downtown, and the Historic Preservation Commission, who obviously has some very, you know, some deep concerns, and rightfully so, of the charact, historic character and integrity of our, our central business district, were, came together as a working group under the umbrella of ZARC, and, and really, I think, came up with an ordinance that will give merchants and business owners downtown a great new marketing tool in terms of more visible signage, but it will not compromise the look and function of our, our buildings downtown, which really are so much of what people think of when they think of Princeton. So what you have before you is a proposal to allow projecting signs, one per business storefront, basically. We've limited them to eight square feet, which is a little bigger than some towns allow, smaller than some others, so we think it's probably just right for, for maximum area of the sign. Two-sided signs are permitted, with, it restricts lighting, it talks about how the signs will be mounted on the building for safety purposes. The ordinance talks about where they'll be placed on facades so that they don't obstruct the view of other signage on, in front of other stores, as well as awnings, so it works well with flat signs and awnings and other signage that's allowed in, in the business district. And just so you know, the zones that are included, where, the zones in town where projecting signs will be permitted at this stage, would be basically the, the business district along Nassau Street, roughly from like Murray Street and that end, the eastern end of the business, central business district, which, there's different zones, but you know, I'm talking about by the post office, and then moving west towards Bank Street, pretty much the, the, where the major business district is along Nassau Street. And then we included the Witherspoon Street corridor as well, because as you know, there's a lot of, first, downtown businesses, and then as you move north, they become more neighborhood businesses, but they would all benefit, we think, from projecting signs. So that comes all the way up to basically where we are here at the municipal complex. So that, that's generally the proposal, and we think it'll give our merchants and business owners in the central part of the municipality a great new marketing tool for their businesses. And we think it'll also be an attractive addition to the streetscape, because as many of you know, when you go visit other towns, particularly when you're on vacation and where these kind of signs are permitted, people have gotten very creative in, in recently, and how to make these signs. I'm always pleasantly surprised when I go somewhere and I see, whether it's New England or, or other places, other historic places in the United States, and these signs just surprise you as you turn a corner, and it's the way they've been created. And that, that element of surprise and, 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 and just a pleasing aesthetic, I think we really, that can only strengthen the experience of visitors to Princeton. So we're pretty excited about the proposal. We also want you to know that we are going... We also want you to know that we are going to, as part of the more comprehensive review of the entire code, as we move forward with code updating and harmonization of the borough and township codes, we're going to look at signage for other sections of the municipality as well. But we really felt that the urgent need for this type of sign was in the central part of town. So that's why it's basically centered on Nassau Street and Witherspoon Street.
Okay, thank you. Any questions and comments in this, and then I know there's a few people sitting out there who'd like to say something. Board members, do you want to say something? Mr. Quinn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Michael, at ZARC, we talked about the possibility of including illustrations in the ordinance before it goes to council. Where are we on those plans? I know, thank Mr. Zinder for his work on some illustrations that were presented both at the Merchants' Association and to ZARC and to HBC, I imagine.
Yeah, those graphics, and thankfully, we've had that offer from Mr. Zinder's office to help us with the graphics. We can try to get that to, into the version for the council to see, because I do think it will be very helpful for, to understand what we're proposing. So we'll follow up on that.
And when is this scheduled to go to council, if it passes here? Then next week, is it now, or?
Tuesday, November 12th.
So next Tuesday, if it can be done.
Well, and I'm sure we could at least give a sample of how the graphics would work. We'll follow up on that.
Anyone else? Jeffrey?
Yes, thank you. I would just add that, you know, I think another part of this is, you know, there's been a lot of interest in cleaning up the sidewalks a little bit from the sandwich boards that are, you know, sometimes they're very effective at noting sales or special events, which is what they're for, but I think a number of businesses have used them because they didn't have any way to kind of have a signage that was perpendicular to the storefront, which is really how you attract maybe pedestrians more effectively, especially if you're off Nassau Street. And so, I think, I think we really, I do want to thank again the merchants for all their work on this, and also the Historic Commission representatives, because I think that they, their perspective was really helpful, and this required an evolution and thinking on their part that they were, that they were able to do as part of the discussion. So thanks for everybody, and I think that one of the values of this is that we can make more of an effort to enforce the use of sandwich boards really only for specific things or noting sort of temporary events rather than being the primary signage for the business.
Anyone else? If not, let me just open this up, and I know that people out there would at least like a chance to say something to this. Anyone want to speak to this? Give your name, please.
My name is Mark Sullivan, an architect here in town. My name is Mark Sullivan, I'm an architect here in town with a firm that does a lot of approvals and a lot of time with the ordinances, especially with signage approvals, with this guy here. I'm also a PMA board member, and this, I think, as everyone knows, is very important to the businesses here in town. There's a lot of precedence for it, as Michael summarized quite nicely, both here in Princeton and in Jersey and in elsewhere. I think the size of the sign is still a point of discussion. We started with 12 square feet, I think staff is interested in eight square feet. There is precedence for the larger sign. Nobody wants to get as big as the Lahir's sign, but I think there's a good discussion to be had about what's an appropriate-sized projecting sign for this town. So I just want to say that the PMA is very pleased that this has been brought forward. I think it's a first step in making signage much easier to deal with and get approved, both for those of us who work in it and for the businesses. We look forward to this moving on up to council and getting approved. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. And you all heard that this will be going to council next week, so you can all think about it for two or three days before then. Any further comments, or would somebody like to propose that we send this on to council with approval? Anyone?
Sure, I'll move it.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Do you want to just read the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Arney?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Spaul. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. All right. And that concludes the discussion of the ZARC referrals. Thank you again, Jeffrey. It's been a very, very busy fall. Let's move on to the hearings. We have one item tonight. This is Nelson Spring LLC and its amended site plan with variances. This is 45 Spring Street, block 2704, block 20.
As the applicant is getting ready, Eileen, does the board have jurisdiction?
Yes.
Approved public service in order?
Yes.
Before we get started, I'm sorry I didn't get to vote on that, because I would have voted yes. I have a thing going on, and I'm afraid I'm just not going to be able to control my coughing, which I realize is a distraction, and so I think I'm going to just exit, and with apologies, but it looks like there's plenty of folks here, right? And I was told earlier today that I am not contagious. So if anybody's worried about catching-
Good thought.
...the thing I have, hopefully that is not a concern. So again, my apologies.
We hope you feel better.
Thanks. I do feel better, I just sound like hell.
Michael, if you want to start us off on this hearing?
Michael, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give be the truth?
I do.
So it's a word or affirm?
Now that I've woken everyone up. Hello, this is an amended site plan with variances application. This was approved, the site has a project that was approved in February of 2018 for an expansion of an existing one-story commercial building, Nelson Glass Company. The proposal was to add three stories, six residential units, with one affordable unit included in those six units. And then, it's attached to another frame building and accessory garage, it's all on the site with surface parking. There was also a parking variance that was granted in 2018. The required parking was 13 spaces. The site was going to accommodate parking for 11 cars, and that was in a somewhat of a stacked parking arrangement, which was going to be monitored by the tenant, well, by the owner on the site, Nelson Glass, which was going to remain on the first-floor commercial space. One of the conditions of the approval was that if the tenancy of that commercial space by Nelson Glass was to change, it would come back to the Planning Board to discuss how that first-floor space would be occupied. There's been some other minor changes to the site that you'll hear about as well from the applicant, some relatively minor changes to the architecture of the upper floors in terms of positioning of balconies and some arrangements of stairs and access space within the development. Another feature is that the parking that's, the parking count that's now proposed is 10 spaces, and from the 11, so it's a new, basically a new parking variance request, but we think that's an interesting proposal, because the one space that was part of this original development, site plan application, was one space that was in front, right on Spring Street, and you came right out to Spring Street from the front of the building. And the proposal now is that if there's a different commercial use on the first floor, like a retail or restaurant use, then that former parking spot would become a more pedestrian-oriented courtyard or nicely landscaped entrance area. So you'll be hearing about that from the applicant.
Michael, you've been referring to a, something on the presentation board, could you identify that and mark it as PB1?
I will, okay. And I, it is in the central business zone where it's a permitted use, but there are these various considerations for site plan review and the parking variance. So it's an interesting project, it was approved, it's basically, it's not very different than what you saw and approved last year, but you do have this issue of Nelson Glass, which was the owner of the property, not being on the site now, so the proposal is to allow for another commercial use, retail or restaurant, in that first-floor space, and some of the architectural changes that you'll hear about. And of course, the parking, but that would be a switch from parking spot in the front adjacent to the sidewalk in Spring Street to a pedestrian area. Those are some of the major features of what's before you this evening.
And what's on the presentation board in PB1, that's the site plan, from the site plan side?
Correct. The site, I should have said this first, just so you have your bearings, the site is on Spring Street, it's east of Tulane Street and right near the intersection of North Tulane and Spring, it backs onto Lincoln Court, and it's not too far from the Spring Street parking garage. So if you can picture that area, it's an interesting in-town location with mixed buildings, mixed uses, residential and commercial.
Is your question?
Yeah, I'm not sure if it's for Michael or Derek, but there was something in the report about the potential to have a waiver for stacked parking if the parking spaces were controlled by a single entity, either residence or commercial entity, and obviously this is not the case here.
I think they're going to provide testimony on that.
Derek, if you could raise your right hand.
I'm sorry.
You two affirm the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
It wasn't so much a question about how it was going to work, but just the technical, legal implications of the fact that it doesn't meet the waiver. I guess that's why they're looking for a variance instead of a waiver or-
It is a waiver, it is a variance, because there is a stacked parking ordinance, but you have to have over 100 cars. It was kind of designed for a parking garage such as Palmer Square, so that was, we considered a variance. And in Michael, there is, in his report, there is also another variance for a sign, for the Nelson Glass building, which is a little larger than is required, so. But it is a variance, just because stacked parking is not permitted unless you have 100 cars and you have a parking structure to put them in, but we think that, you know, here the applicant's testimony, but they have some interesting ideas about it.
Derek, can I follow up with that? Is there, including the stacked spaces, how many spaces are there? Are there 10 or more than 10?
There's 10, right, Michael?
Yes.
And that includes the stacked spaces?
Yes, sir.
Right, and we felt, staff reports raised the importance of hearing how that's going to be managed, especially since an owner is not going to be on-site, as was the case with Nelson Glass earlier.
Anyone?
Michael?
Did you have anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Jack?
I just had one quick clarification question, that the parking space that's in the front, we received a set of photographs where there's a truck parked in front of the garage. Is that the space we're talking about?
That's the-
That's not the one that's actually on the street in front of the-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, it's the on-site spot that looks like a driveway right now to the garage.
Right.
That would become a pedestrian area.
This would be no longer a space.
Correct.
Gotcha.
That was space number 11, you could say, from the previous approval.
Thanks.
Anyone else? All right, then, thank you very much, Michael, we hear from the applicant.
Go ahead. Okay, thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Michael. For the record, my name is Christopher Dugresia from the law firm of Drinker, Biddle, and Wreath, here on behalf of the applicant, Nelson Spring LLC. As Michael said, we're here for an amended site plan and variance application. We're requesting two variances, one related to the number of parking spaces, and the other relating to a sign that we would like to propose, because your ordinance does not allow an applicant to name a building and then also have a tenant sign. So that's basically why we're requesting a variance there. You probably, or at least some of you, most of you remember this application, it was just last year. I think the resolution was adopted maybe in June of 2018, or June or July. We received preliminary and final site plan approval. It was a property that was part of adaptive reuse and redevelopment. We appeared both before the SPRAB and Historic Preservation, and you probably remember, or maybe you don't, it was really well-received by them. They put together really nice review reports. There's a lot of really positive elements of this project, and we're not going to really go into them tonight at all, because we have very minor details that we're requesting, but I thought I would refresh your recollection. It has, for example, some of the really nice attributes is there's a green roof, it's designed to be a minimum of lead silver. It, as part of our process, the board asked us to add pavers in the back for the stacked spots, so the stacked spaces in the back have porous pavers. It has an affordable housing unit. It reduced coverage from what exists there today. It provided a nice transition from the commercial down to the residential with a smaller mixed building use, so it was a really nice transition. And it was able to preserve a structure that's over 100 years old, which is the house to the left of that picture there. So it's preserving the residential house. So it had a really lot, a lot of really nice aspects to it, and it was, it had a lot of great feedback from the consultants' reports. At the time of approval, as Michael said, the plan was that the applicant would relocate to a site and then come back. Once she rolled up the sleeves, started to look at what's available, started to understand the market, breaking it down, stopping the business, fitting out a new space, starting it there, and then doing it all again, just didn't seem to be very feasible, especially since she thought we were, she was going to be locating to like Pennington area, because there was some availability there. She found some great opportunities close where she could stay and serve the community. So ultimately, as part of the, you know, after we started to understand the market, her idea and thinking was along the lines that it was just too disruptive to stop the company again and do the whole move a second time. So as part of that, they looked at seeing if there was some interest for retail, and something about 2,000 square feet in that downtown area for retail is really a tough market. Right now, you're seeing a lot of movement with food establishments, restaurants, and that really seems to be the only viable use. So right now, it's a big endeavor to go through this much, for a family to go through this much of the project with the expectation of having an empty ground-floor space. So that's why we're here tonight, to ask for some flexibility, because we really don't want to have an empty ground-floor space. So we're requesting the flexibility to have either retail, because if a retail person comes in, that would be great, or a food service establishment. And that's one of the reasons, you know, that's basically the purpose tonight. Interestingly, when you typically take a use from your retail to food, both uses are permitted under the code, they're appropriate on a ground-floor level, but they have a slightly different calculation of parking. So for, I want to make sure I get this right, so I'm going to look down here. So for retail use, you're required one parking space per every 475 feet, and a very similar calculation, but for the food use, it's one space for every 400 feet. When you're talking about a little- 400 feet. When you're talking about a little space like 2,000 square feet, it's really not, it's all decimal points. But what's very interesting here is, as part of our construction review, DCA review, the bottom space actually got smaller. So when we got the original space approved, it was for 2,060 square feet for retail, and that generated a parking need of five spaces. That 2,060 feet is now 1,955 feet, and as a food service establishment, still generates the exact same parking demand of five parking spaces. So that's not what's triggering a variance here, because we've reduced the size of the space, whether it's retail or the smaller space. As food, it's still a five-space requirement. That's not why we need a variance. When we started to look at the space, we had a parking space in front that was grandfathered in. It was undersized, so it didn't meet the dimensions, and it was used by Nelson Glass. The idea was Nelson Glass was coming back, so they were going to continue to use it. But as we started to look at the space for other tenants, you know, other people, we thought, this is really, it doesn't fit. It's kind of like random in the middle of nowhere, just out there. And we thought it would be really an enhancement of the space and the streetscape to make that part of, you know, something more vibrant. So if it was a food use or restaurant, there could be tables. If it was a retail, they could put a pallet of plants or benches, whatever, just make it more active. So that's why we're here today. We're requesting the ability to remove that undersized space. We could actually get rid of the variance by keeping it there. You know, we could still switch the use and all, but it just didn't make sense because from an aesthetic point of view, from a safety standpoint, where you have people pulling in and out, it just didn't make sense, and it just, overall, we thought to removing it would be a better thing. The other variance, as I said, is the sign, and that's there because we want to preserve the right of a tenant to have a sign. So if a new retail or food use goes in, we want them to be able to put a 20-square-foot or whatever the sign requirement is. If we go now and just put up our sign, we would use up the requirement, and then the tenant would have to come before this board for a variance. So we're requesting it at this time. You can probably remember that the history of the property is very important to the applicant, and the keeping the name, since the business, I think next year will be the 70, 70 years of Nelson Glass, they want to have that building, the name Nelson Glass Building on it to kind of preserve that Nelson House, Nelson Glass House, to kind of preserve that legacy since it's been around. So that's, I guess, the intro. I think what I'll do is I'll turn it over to Josh Zinder, who's qualified as an architect before we can go through, or you can accept him as a professional architect.
Josh, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Joshua Zinder, Z-I-N-D-E-R.
Do you want to hear Mr. Zinder's qualifications, anyone? I think we've...
You're good.
...seen quite a bit of him.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay. As you may recall, Nelson Glass is a one-story modern industrial building on Spring Street. Our previous approval allowed for a three-story addition on top of the existing building. Six apartments, one of which will be affordable, will be added to the building. The building was also designed to lead silver standards. The project is geared up, permits have been issued, and is ready to begin construction. The first floor, there is a commercial space of 1,955 square feet, a lobby, an elevator lobby, bike storage, concealed trash, and recycling. The former parking spot in the front will become pavers, similar to the ones that were recommended in the Nassau Streetscape study. The second floor, there are three apartments, two two-bedroom units and one one-bedroom unit. One of these two-bedroom units will be affordable unit. The third floor has two apartments, one two-bedroom and one three-bedroom. The fourth floor has one three-bedroom apartment. The roof still is a green roof and houses the mechanical as well for the building. After the previous approvals, there were some changes that needed to be made as a result of DCA and state approvals and review. The scissor stairs, which we previously had, had to be changed to two independent stairs. This reduced some of the commercial space and increased the size of the ground floor of it. Please note that all of the changes to the plans that we're going to show you fit into the previous approval and did not affect the FAR or the previous approved variances. The changes in the stair also necessitated moving the balconies to the other side of the structure for the affordable unit and the unit above. The height of the building was reduced. This was a result of the change in the elevator that was selected requiring a shorter overrun. The stepbacks and viewplanes for the building have not changed, and the building still fits into the overall urban context. The floors step back from the street, and they step back from the neighbor, and they fit into the overall scale of the block. The view down Spring Street illustrates the stepbacks. You can see here how we step it back to maintain the light and the air in the street. So now, I'll begin to talk about some of the variance issues and some of the things we're looking for approval tonight. The slide you have in front of you is previously approved parking plan. This worked with Nelson Glass remaining in the space. Please note that the variance for the parking had included the other house on the property, which currently rents its spaces from an adjacent park property and has done so for approximately, I believe, 30 years. And these calculations that we have up here and that we're going to talk about tonight really focus on the new building. So previously, we had required 10 spaces for this building, and we have provided 11 spaces for the building. With the retail market very soft, there's been more interest in the space as a food venue. A food venue tenancy would benefit from outdoor dining and a more approachable entry by eliminating the parking space in the front. Looking at the stacked parking of the three commercial spots and the three residential spots with unknown tenants, we identified potential key management systems that could work. However, it created a series of management challenges that we did not think were beneficial to the project or our client. We revised the parking plan to shift the stacked parking to be connected with the specific tenants and eliminate the potential conflict. And we also show here the potential for dining out in front on Spring Street. So in addition to that, there's a letter, which I don't know if you're going to distribute, the BFJ letter. We have a letter from BFJ Planning there, and in that, they explain that the six residential parking spaces, you know, as a result, may not actually be needed. It looks quite likely that out of the units, you might have one unit that needs two parking spots and two units that probably won't have any. So, you know, the spot in front of, that we're showing in front of loading dock, if it was needed for residential, it could be residential, or if it wasn't needed for residential, it could become an additional commercial spot. And based on, I believe what you'll hear shortly, there may not even be a need for the four commercial parking spaces, and that could potentially allow the residential to flip. But the totals we're looking at are, you know, 10 are required, and we're providing 10.
Yeah, so we do have somebody that, George, who wrote the report, unfortunately, is in Cornell tonight, but we have someone from BFJ Planning that could talk a little bit about the information that you have in that letter. We could have her brought up and sworn in if you like. Just to kind of give you our perspective from, you know, from this approach, I think we were kind of overly complicating it, looking at and trying to figure out all the shifting. So what we really wanted to do is to kind of separate the uses to kind of make this very, very simple. So when you focus in on what we are proposing, you'll see that we really can accommodate the need of the building. And I'm not talking about what's required under code because we're still requesting the variance for one. But really, in actual practice, what are we going to need? So when you take a look at the commercial space, most of the, either restaurants or retail along Nassau, many of those don't even have a single parking spot. We actually have four here. They'll be stacked together in the corner, and that's going to be more than enough because the people, you may, you have an owner, you have maybe a couple other people that may need to pull in, but the reality is, the people that are coming to work during the shifts are either taking buses, or biking, or walking, or coming from the university. Four spaces, if you look at some of the stats, and it's talked about in the letter, we could have her, is more than enough for that use. When you look at the six units, statistically, there's not going to be a need for a car for all the units. So how we set it up is, to just go back to the previous one, because that one, we set it up to have one, two, three, four, five. So you could have literally five units, one with two parking spaces, or if you have an arrangement where they really, you do have six units and they need six, you could still work that out, but these two people will have to work out an arrangement with shared keys. And we could do that. It's residential, it's really not complicated. We tried to simplify the whole thing so that we don't have commercial and residential pulling in and out. We keep residential separate, they all get their assigned spot. We keep the commercial separate, they all get their assigned spot. And in reality, we don't even expect this much need for residential, and we could shift this spot, the R1, to either commercial or residential depending. And the reality is, we may get a residential, I mean, a food use or a retail use that only needs two or three spaces, and then what we would do is essentially take this space as the food and do two of the stacked as the food, and the other one, open it up for a two-car for one of the residential, like the person that wanted to have two cars. So if we go with this thinking of how to really address the need, this is sort of how we thought about it. So we don't have to go through, we could set it up with the key system and box, but, you know, we thought, let's separate it, let's keep it simple, let's focus on what's really needed, and make sure we don't have any negative impacts. We could have, of course, like I said, remove the, add the parking space back up here, but again, it's an undersized spot, it's not great from a safety standpoint, and that's sort of where we're, that's sort of where we left. Do you want me to bring up our traffic consultant?
Just, first, let's mark the PowerPoint presentation as A1. Chris, do you have a hard copy of that?
I'll email it tomorrow.
Okay, great. If you can do that, that'd be great. Okay. And then second, we'll mark the letter as A2.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. So Lauren, do you want to just...
Can you grab briefly and tell us your qualifications?
Yes.
If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony about to give will be the truth?
I do.
So sworn or affirmed, please state your full name and spell your last name.
My name is Lauren Renee. Renee spelled as R-E-N-N-E-E. May I continue? I'm a transportation planner at BFJ Planning that works directly with George Eckmeyer. He sends his regards, and he's sorry you can't be with you tonight. I'm just going to just mention some of my relevant planning experience and education. I have a master's in urban and regional planning from the University of California, Los Angeles. I also am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners, and I am a professional transportation planner, as certified by the Transportation Professional Certification Board. I've been working with BFJ Planning for six years, and I would say a majority of my projects are in the Princeton area, also West Windsor and Plainsboro. I've worked on many projects that have come before your board in the last few years, and I've done some of the analysis behind this one.
Thank you very much. We accept your qualifications.
Thank you. I would like just to take you through the memo that you have in front of you. I don't want to be too repetitive. I feel that maybe my thunder got stolen. But I do want to emphasize maybe on the analysis part and why we came to some of the conclusions that we did. So, you know, starting with the residential parking, you know, here, we really look towards, you know, the recent American Community Survey data from the US Census, you know, which shows that 22% of households in the census tract, it's a census tract 40 in Mercer County, which, you know, comprises a downtown area and a little around, 22% of households own zero vehicles. And when you look at the breakdown, which is offered on page two, with 43% of households with one, only one vehicle, 29% of households owning two vehicles, and the remaining 6% owning three vehicles, what that roughly translates into is one to two apartments that are not going to have vehicles. Given the proximity to the university, given the fact that we are in a really walkable area, this is a high, high likelihood. So therefore, the six parking spaces that are shown in the slide before look to be a bit of overkill. Now, we also, so really just breaking it down, we think that one to two apartments won't have vehicles. The remaining four apartments will have vehicles. Three of those, we think, one vehicle, and maybe the last one could have two vehicles. So looking at the plan before you, you know, looking at spaces R5 and R6, which are stacked, that could be one of the apartments. And then you have the remaining, you know, three single spaces adjacent to those, which would be those other apartments that own one vehicle. And there's the high likelihood that that space, that vehicle where you see R1, and now in this slide, could be purpose for commercial. Moving on to the commercial use, the four spaces in the previous proposal will be primarily used by employees. And we, you know, we suspect that, or we know that, given the walkability of this neighborhood, given the park and walk behavior, that patrons, whether of a retail or a food establishment, will be parking off-site. That will be the expectation. 200 feet away is the Spring Street garage, and then there's two other garages within a quarter-mile walk, and the area surrounded by metered parking spaces. So we believe there is the expectation of the client that will be parking off-site. They will probably already be in downtown Princeton, patroning other businesses. Given the size of the commercial space, it's not likely that this is going to be a destination retail or destination restaurant. So we do think that, you know, this will be one stop of many when they're downtown. As far as the employees, the employees are most likely going to be walking, biking, or taking public transit to work, given the type of jobs that are usually associated with this type of use. And also looking at Journey to Work Census data, which, it's great, 30% of workers that reside in the census tract walk to work. I'm jealous. So I think, you know, with, you know, looking at the census data, looking at how we see this downtown operate, the parking plan that's proposed here should be more efficient. I think that, you know, that that's pretty much all of my remarks, unless there's any questions. Otherwise, I'll step down.
Questions, anyone? No one said how many people this would seat if it was a restaurant? Is it, do you have any sort of idea?
I do have that idea.
How the space would be used as a restaurant and how many patrons there would be?
No, I personally cannot speak to that based on the information that I have.
No?
The parking calculation in CB is based on 400 square feet for a restaurant. It's not based on seats as it is in some of the other zones in town, so.
Okay. Yes, Tim?
Question about the census tract information. So with 22% of households with no vehicle... So with 22% of households with no vehicle, do you know whether they're counting university undergrads who are living in dormitories in that number?
I don't think so, because that is in the Census tract to the south. This Census tract is bound, I'm sorry. The university residence halls for undergraduates are contained in a different Census tract than this, because the southern border of-
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble here.
Oh, I'm sorry, I might not project, I apologize. The university undergrads live in a different Census tract. I believe the Census tract 40, the southern boundary, is Nassau Street.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead.
It's more of a comment than a question, but I think the, you know, I accept pretty much all of the conclusions of your report. The thing I am hesitating on is the two stacked residential parking spaces. And the problem that I have with the report is that you're basing the prediction that you're not going to have a problem with the distribution of car ownership amongst the six units, based on these percentages in the Census tract. But this is such a small sample. Like, if you had a residential building that was 50 units, I would say you could rely pretty closely on the 22%, you know, not needing a car at all, or whatever. But when you have a sample size of six, the deviations, you know, from what's predicted statistically are, there's really actually a pretty big chance that you'll have a different composition of residences, of residents in this building. It might turn out that you need fewer spaces than what we're showing in the plan. But it's also possible, unless we put some kind of a condition on the approval, that you could end up with six units, with each unit needing a car, and no unit needing two cars. And then you've got this problem with the stacked space. And so, I don't know if you have a reaction to that, but I'm leaning towards having some kind of a condition that says that the stacked residential spaces can't be used by people from separate residential units, or something along those lines.
I don't have any hard facts to add, except for the fact that, I'm sorry, I just said except for the fact. This is an arrangement that we do see in smaller apartment complexes or apartment developments that is successful. And I would depend on, you know, the arrangement, you know, with the landlord, and terms of the lease. But in my personal opinion, and possibly, you know, professional opinion, I think that this can work.
So you're saying that you're aware of other apartments in Princeton, or West Windsor, that have stacked parking for owners of different residential units?
I can now say for the record that I can say, or state one development off the top of my head. However, the informal arrangement of stacked parking, I think is quite prevalent, especially in commuting areas, in downtowns.
Just, just so, just to comment, I think, given the size of the large unit, there is an expectation that there will be one that will probably use too. So having four and five tied to one unit is not a big deal, because that's our expectation. That's what, and our whole idea was that it would function like a driveway. Two parking spaces, one unit uses it, and then you have the other-
I would be comfortable with that.
And just to give you an idea, there's two units on site right now that have the three parking spaces in the corner that you see. Only one of those has, just one car, so the two units has one car. So right now, there's only one unit with one car. And there's empty spaces on the neighbor's tract. Just to give you an idea, that's why we have this expectation, based on not just the stats, but the history of the property. I think it has to do with the location, too. These units are in the center of the town, you know. A lot of people are going to bike and walk two blocks from the university.
Okay. Other questions, anyone? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have a couple more slides, Mike?
Yeah, yep. Okay, so we're going to move on to the second variance. So we're requesting a variance for Nelson Glass House's building signage and number, which you see here in the overall building elevation. If we enlarge that floor, you can see it a little bit clearer. You can see that the building signage, which is maintaining the style of the existing Nelson Glass Company font, and, and it'll have a very similar feel to what's there now. The building is requesting this variance to allow a tenant to create their signage within the allowable ordinances. By doing this, when they submit their project, they will not have to apply for a variance or any extended approvals. In addition, the tenant, if the tenant wants an awning, they will be required by this to use a retractable loose valance awning, which we recognize is preferred by HBC. Please note that the name of the building, Nelson Glass House, is critically important to this project, as it represents the legacy of Bob Nelson, the founder of Nelson Glass, and Robbie Nelson's father. Here you see the existing building again, and please note, you can also see the signage, the Nelson Glass Company signage. Here you see the building as previously approved with the addition. And it also represents what might be retail on the bottom floor. And if we just remove some of the street signs to make clearer view, here you see what could be a potential tenant signage and awning in context for what could be a retail space. And then, as a food venue, the entry area and patio can be a vibrant asset to the street, and help the building engage the community. You should also note that in this view, it also illustrates that the patio in front, and the elimination of the off-street parking spot, the town would be able to have another space for a meter. And, and so even though we'd be losing the off-street parking spot, the town could gain on-street parking, where the current curb cut is. And if we see the awning is retractable, which we know HBC likes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Could you just remind me how, particularly if this is a food or restaurant use, where deliveries are going to take place?
Sure.
I can flick all the way back to the floor plan.
Do you want to use?
No, it's going to be easier here. So if we look at this plan, actually, we should look at this one, this is the one we're proposing. So the deliveries will be made on Lincoln Court. And if there are cars in the spaces, then they'll use the five-foot width handicap access lane spot, the striped area, to come straight through to the, mine's not working, to come straight through to the doorway. And then, of course, if the loading bay is empty, they could pull into the loading bay. But all the deliveries will be made off of Lincoln Court, and none of the deliveries will be made off of Spring Street.
Right, and delivery vehicles will have to back, back out, or?
Well, I can't explain how they get in and out, honestly, but I can tell you that there are, you know, lots of delivery trucks on Lincoln Court.
Yes, I saw, and I saw backing out of there.
Yeah, Triumph has their, you know, the garbage vehicles come in and out of there. They have deliveries along Lincoln Court all the time. And so we just, it'll be a similar type of setup. And if there doesn't have to be a car in that spot, then they could pull into the loading area.
Where will, where will trash pickup be?
Trash pickup would be, we have a trash enclosure that's shown.
Is it right here?
Yeah, that's right there. That's in the back, and it's directly adjacent to the loading dock, and it would be taken out, out the back. And they have a, if I remember from the previous approvals, we had worked with the trash collector, the independent company they were planning on using, to verify the, you know, the size of the trash area.
So if the, if there are cars in the parking spaces, they'd be rolled out manually to Lincoln?
Yeah, there would be, there's space for it to be put out in front.
And is that-
Put out in packing.
Three landfill and three recycling, or, but what's the breakdown of those six?
Honestly, I don't remember, it was in the previous approvals. We had, we had a lot of documentation on what it was. I think one of them was for compost. I don't remember how it broke down otherwise, whether it was trash, two for trash and two for, I don't remember. I do know one of them had been intended for compost, though.
Hey, so I guess while we're on the topic of parking, I kind of wanted to say something earlier, but I didn't, and we skipped ahead, so it's good that we kind of went back, so. Do you mind if we switch back to the diagram? Also get to the signage, but. Yeah, so I, I again want to mention that we shouldn't really be talking about parking in downtown, because I don't think there should be parking requirements downtown. And so, you know, when we're talking about zoning amendments, maybe we should reconsider that in the zoning. But, you know, I kind of like, even though I feel like we shouldn't be talking about it, I like, you know, the exercise of how to arrange parking, because it sort of seems like a puzzle to me. But, yeah, I think that for this, I wonder whether it makes sense to have residential parking spot in the loading bay, and whether it makes more sense to potentially turn three and one to residential parking. And, you know, you could potentially leave the bay for just commercial parking, and you could probably do a stack there. I mean, it seems like there's pretty much enough space to do that. I also wonder if, like, to the, to the left of, I guess it's the same left of the R6 and C5, you could potentially fit another spot, but maybe that's a stretch, I don't know. Is that like a landscape buffer, or is that, so?
Yeah, we have a, there's a, between the loading area and the first parking is a handicap striped area. So that, we're required, because we have more than at least 10 spots, we're required that one of them be accessible.
That's a handicap spot.
And then we actually did try really hard to squeeze two cars into the loading area, and we were short about five feet, and it was, it was too short to even submit as a variance, honestly. And so I would say this, that, that as a restaurant use, it doesn't have a, or, you know, or your retail use, there wouldn't be a huge loading demand. Actually, Nelson Glass has a much larger loading demand, you know, during the day, when they're taking things in and out and such. You know, so the, having it shared as residential, it shouldn't really be as big of an issue.
So if it's a restaurant, there wouldn't be a big demand for loading and on loading?
If you think about it, like, the time that the residential car will be in that spot typically, will be in the evenings. So that's when you have the overlap between a restaurant and the residential. And in the evenings, they're not taking deliveries.
Okay. And I'm just curious, like, in terms of how you allocate parking spots to residents, are you just giving each unit its own parking space? Or does the tenant have to pay for a parking space?
I suspect the tenant's going to have to pay, but I would, I would guess that the stacked units would probably go to the, would be looked at for the largest unit, which is actually larger than most homes in the borough.
It should make you happy, Zan, that they have to pay discouraged car ownership.
Make them pay, yeah. Okay, that's good to know. Yeah, but you may want to think about the rearrangement. It's just a suggestion, I like to make these suggestions, but no requirements.
Ideally, we won't have any car parked in the loading zone, because you won't have all those cars there.
Ideally. So going back to the signage, though, I'm just curious, in terms of the zoning and the signage ordinance, is there any, so it's conforming, there's no requirements about multiple names? Because I feel like that has come up in the past, and-
The ordinance allows a business at street level to have a sign. So, I mean, technically, there is part of the Nelson Glass at street level, that's a business that could have a sign, but there isn't physically enough space to, to fit a sign that really would serve a purpose to identify the building. So that's why they're putting it basically kind of on the second floor, but it identifies the building, and it still permits space to have reasonable tenant signage for the new business on the, on the first floor. So it's kind of similar, like Carne Valley, they had a, they couldn't get a business sign where they wanted to do it, and they went with an awning sign, which works out fine. But I, I mean, I think this sign speaks to the building, and it, it's kind of there now, and it kind of feels like it's been there a while, but that's just my opinion.
I'd just make one clarification, that's different from Carne Valley in that we're being proactive in having this discussion before we have a tenant in. It's used up all of the square footage for the signage.
Thanks for noting that. Okay.
Okay, and you're definitely going with Glass House rather than Glass Company, which is the signage that's been there since 1960?
Yeah.
Yeah, 1960.
I would also like to compliment the applicant on the outdoor seating out there, because I think that that was a good, good change. I think that that will be pretty nice, when it's done, if it's done that way.
So just, just, I only have like one more comment. I don't know if you have any more questions, but just so from a legal standpoint, under your bulk variances, you have C1, C2s. We were looking, oh, I'm sorry, thank you. We were looking at this as a C2 variance, which is a flexible variance, and you justify those based on better planning and positive benefits to the community. So in this particular case, we could remove the variance entirely by putting a parking space there, or just keeping what's there, what was previously approved. So by taking it out and actually triggering a variance, we're able to increase the safety. You know, like I said, cars pulling in and out, it's just from the parallel. We're able to increase the aesthetics, make it more lively. And although Josh mentioned it's completely up to the municipality, that space in front could convert to a parking space for the public and be a metered spot, which actually results in no loss when you look at parking. Instead of onsite, there's an offsite. I mean, that's not ours, I mean, that's the talents to think about. But ultimately, we think it's justified. And from, I just wanted to address the standard. Thank you.
Okay. And halo lighting is something that we permit under our signage?
What's that?
Halo lighting for the-
Yes, yes, ma'am, it's, it's behind the letter, so it's not visible.
Any other questions? Anything? Anybody?
There's a couple people raising hands there.
Jack? Do you swear or affirm that testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
So sworn or affirmed?
Just as we were talking about that, the existing depressed curb and adding the one parking space, a condition would be that that depressed curb would be removed, and full-height curbing would be put in.
I'm sorry, Jack, can you say that again?
Where the depressed curb is right now, in front of the proposed seating, that would be eliminated, and full-height curb would be put in.
And so a parking spot would go in front of it?
Right here.
Right, so we could put a parking, a metered spot there.
I'm sorry, you were saying that the metered spot should also be part of the decision?
No, the town would actually do that.
Which is acceptable. So essentially, the question is taking this ramp and converting it to a curb, which makes sense.
Okay, if there's no further discussion right now, let me open it up to the public.
I just have a question for Derek. Derek, one of the variances granted last time dealt with the stacked parking. One of the rationales for granting it was, there was Nelson Glass on site, and they could manage the stacked parking. Do you think there's a need for further variance, or is that variance still sufficient? Do you think there's a need for further variance, or is that variance still sufficient? But just, what's your judgment on that?
I mean, I think, I think the board has to look at the testimony. From what I've heard, it seems like they can control a modest-sized restaurant and the residential units, also given the parking, uh, planner's testimony about the availability of parking in walkers and other types of urban situations like this. So, I don't know if the, I think if the board's comfortable with it, it's, it's a variance for stacked parking. You're doing the variance for the number of parking spaces. I, I think it could be encompassed in that, but.
I, I guess I, I don't remember the way it was before, but if, if it was approved previously with stacked residential sp- spots, then I don't see there being a new variance with this application because it's continuing with, you know, the control of the, of the parking spots by the, either the residential or the commercial units hasn't changed, I guess, because there were stacked residential spots before.
Yeah, we're not, we're not changing it.
So, I don't see it as a, a new variance.
And, and the prior variance wasn't tied into residential or, the stack can be the commercial or residential spaces?
No, it was more like the way the case was presented. It was, you know, we're going to have someone on site, so staff thought that the board should look at this again and reexamine the variances, and, you know, it was something that you guys needed to, to weigh in on. Yeah, I think it's, the variance is the variance. It's for stacked parking. What changed is the justification for the variance.
Okay. Well, let's, let's open it to the public and see if anybody would like to speak to this. No? Everyone looks so awake and interested. I thought you were all going to leap up and say something. All right. Okay, let's, let's close that again. And, any further comments, board members? Jerry, have we, is this going to be complicated additions?
No, not at all. Um, I mean, what's before the board is, uh, application for amended major site plan, two variances. The one, uh, for now, uh, the additional parking space being eliminated. The second, with respect to the Nelson Glass House sign, which is not permitted. The only conditions I see are, number one, um, that the depressed curb will be eliminated, and just a full curb, how would you describe that, Jack?
Full-height curb.
Full-height curb, okay.
And the request for the flexibility between the uses.
Say again?
The flexibility of the uses, which is part of our application.
You mean of, of retail or restaurant?
Retail or food.
This, this was the relay, relief from?
That doesn't require a variance because both are allowed under your code, and both because the previous and the current generate the same number of parking spaces. It doesn't re-trigger any variances. We're just requesting that because there was a condition-
Yeah.
In the earlier one, we, you know, it was a different, it was slightly different.
Wait a minute, but they-
And, and we could, the-
But they're, you're requesting relief from the condition of having to come back?
Essentially, yeah.
Yeah. We've really satisfied the condition, in, in fact.
Pardon?
You, you've really satisfied the condition.
Oh, we're satisfying by appearing here, but we're asking to be able to put in either food service-
Sure.
-or retail use.
Right, absolutely. And the only other condition I would see is, uh, in the reports, is that all the conditions of the prior approval, um, are incorporated into this approval as well.
I, there was the one other thing that I had requested, that the two stacked residential spots be controlled by the same dwelling unit. And, and they had said they were amenable to that. The two, the two stacked residential- The stacked residential parking units. There's just two of them that are stacked. Those two should be controlled by the same dwelling unit. They shouldn't belong to two different dwelling units.
And be, and be for, be for the same dwelling unit. And be for the same dwelling unit. So, that's it?
So, on our exhibit, uh, proposed plan, uh, that shows the parking spaces that are identified as a stacked residential are R4 and R5, and they, the condition is that they would be under common use, uh, ownership toward, towards a tenant and not split between two tenants, which is agreed.
And I take it another condition actually should be that it's the proposed, the alternate proposed plan is a parking plan that's going to be utilized, correct?
Yes.
Yeah. And the, the bike racks are at the same place in spite of the-
Yes.
Availability of space in, on, in the front?
The bike racks have not changed from the previous. They're, they're, in the plan, they're right behind where the trash is. They're mounted vertically on the wall.
You're not thinking of putting them out front?
There are, uh, three bike racks out in front as well. Right, the, the bike racks in the back are covered, and the bike racks in the front are open.
Now that you've all heard the conditions Jerry has listed, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move approval.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. Do you want to call the roll on this one, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Oakman?
Yes.
Mr. Quinn?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Tex Orney?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Ms. Fall?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you very much, appreciate your time.
Move to adjourn? Are there some favor?